Okay, folks, it's 6:30. I called the planning board meeting for February 24th to order. First on the agenda are the minutes of February 10th and February 17th. Mr. Secretary.
I should just table in the minutes since I was not here last week for the medical procedure, and I've not received comments from anyone yet, so I should just repeat about until--
Both of them, both the 10th and the 17th. I'd like to move to Secretary that the minutes be tabled, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose-- We're continuing a public hearing. The applicant is Old Main LLC for a definitive plan/special permit to create a 10-lot planned residential development at 96 Old Main Road, North Falmouth. Falmouth Engineering is the engineering firm recording.
No, there were no A and Rs today.
I'm sorry, I should have announced that, but no, there were no A and Rs. So for the applicant, anybody here?
Thank you, Mrs. Careful. For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan. I'm an attorney and I represent the applicant along with Mr. Borselli from Falmouth Engineering. The hearing was continued. There were some issues that were brought up at the last hearing, one of which was the site distance at the proposed driveway entrance at Cobblestone Lane. Mr. Borselli went out and measured that site distance, and we did file a letter for your record indicating that the site distance in a southerly direction is in excess of 600 feet, and site distance in a northerly direction, excuse me, is in excess of 600 feet. The American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, commonly known as ASHTO, is the standard-setting body which publishes specifications and guidelines for site distance and what is considered safe site distance. The standard for safe site distance in a 30 mile an hour zone, which is what we have here, is 200 feet. Even if vehicles are traveling at 40 miles an hour, the safe site distance is 305 feet. So the site distances in both directions on Old Main Road significantly exceed this safe site distance standard. Other than that, I think there was a question about what the length of the driveways would be if the lots shown on the grid plan were developed. That Mr. Borselli filed some information on that. I believe it was possibly 700 feet of required driveway to build out the homes based on a grid subdivision plan. So obviously, that length of driveway construction is not as desirable as the proposed cluster plan for this particular area, and which seems to support the application for the special permit for the cluster subdivision even more. With that, I would turn it over to Mr. Borselli, who can discuss with you some fine tuning on the plans.
Madam Chairman, there was a referral from the engineering department. We received it on Friday, and we went and met with the town planner and assistant town planner on Monday to go through those issues. They were all minor in nature, and we were given some guidance and direction on how to make some minor edits to the plans, which, because we only met yesterday, I have not submitted on the road design. So we will be delivering them to your planning staff probably by the end of this week. Everything else is pretty much the same as we presented at the last hearing.
Does the board have anything further?
Questions?
Okay. As you know, we did not close the hearing. We kept it open for further comments from the applicant and also people here from the public, too. If you have anything new you'd like to say, new comments, I welcome that, and I would tell you, you have to go to the podium and state your name. We are being televised, so our television audience could know who you are. Is there anyone who wishes to have any further questions from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Cynthia Kalaskas?
You have to go up there, because I can't hear you without the microphone. Thank you.
Cynthia Kalaskas, 85 Old Main Road, North Falmouth. We abut the Shubel Nye property, 96 Old Main Road. We're directly across from this. I have a letter that is written by Lily of Franklin, who is also in a butter and owns an 1806 house on Old Main Road. Ours is 1808, just so that you'll know the history of the street. Very old homes, very quiet neighborhood. I'm not going to read her entire letter, but what I will read, I simply-- there are five recommendations that she's made, along with a number of other people from Old Main Road. Number one, a serious traffic study is needed. Proposed site is adjacent to an active neighborhood elementary school, which brings young children walking to and from school, as well as buses entering and leaving through poorly marked adjacent school driveway. Old Main Road is a busy thoroughfare, seldom patrolled by our police for speed violations, and has become a shortcut for drivers avoiding the traffic lights on North Main Highway and 151. As proposed, the developers' plans, Cobblestone Lane will be a blind entry and exit for Old Main Road drivers, as well as the residents of the proposed development. For this reason, we are opposed to the location of the homes, slow coast to the street, and want to see the planning board take into account the safety issues this crowded, cramped streetscape will present to children, seniors, and joggers, and skateboards, and so forth. And as a resident, this is a very, very busy street several times a day. And we do get a lot-- in the summer, it's an active street, too, because it's a very quick shortcut to bike path. Thank you. Her second concern is, school zone warning lights must be repositioned to correct location, which should be very near the proposed development at 96 Old Main Road. This placement should be adjacent to the already busy intersection of Old Main Road and Winslow Road, and at the hill crest that hides the roadway below and beyond. That crest encourages speed, so it occurs right past the proposed Cobblestone Lane driveway, and also past the school entrance. Sadly, the present location of the warning light is misplaced after the driveway entry, and is of no use to alert drivers they're already in a 20 mile an hour zone. This situation must be corrected. Thank you. And her third issue is, the bonus lot permit variance. This is another critically important issue. We find unacceptable the proposed plan of 10 homes, because it does not seem to satisfy the special variance regulations. It seems consideration for a bonus lot is based on a developer's offer to create open space and a cluster plan. In this case, the gift of a bonus lot 10 comes about because the wetlands are unbuildable. Having this many lots is not cluster, it is clutter. Rewarding developer for something he is forced by circumstance to do anyway seems to be an unreasonable use of the law. We recommend the special permit not be granted and limit to nine lots. Reduce plan, eliminating two to three lots. We request that you deny lots 1, 10, 4, permitting only two street-side homes near the historic district in less density on Old Main Road. This would also be defined as visual clearance of entry into the roadway, pedestrian sidewalk, and adjacent school driveway. And create a more attractive entrance aesthetically appropriate to the well-done, high-end development befitting the historic district, as in the plans to densely clutter rather than cluster a poorly arranged, particularly lots 1, 2, 4, 9, and 10, without space and buffers that are lined up along or within the side of Old Main Road. Without established natural vegetation between the homes, nothing like this exists on Old Main Road. Her fifth suggestion-- her fifth suggestion, suggest six or maximum seven home sites. To clarify, request removing two or three home sites from the usual nine grid, which excludes the bonus lot number 10, leaving a total of six or seven maximum, along with the greatest setback on Old Main Road and fewer home sites. We also suggest moving the rear lots bordering the wetlands and Cameron Road neighbors, positive for both new and current homeowners. To summarize, as proposed, the present plan layout is not in keeping with neighboring homes on Old Main Road, is cluttered, creates traffic and pedestrian safety issues, especially critical due to the unique adjacent location near to an active elementary schools, which is constantly used by cars and buses at least twice a day. Crowding homes onto and visible from the sidewalks also diminishes the antique appearance of adjacent homes on Old Main Road. Consideration for the streetscape and sense of lending is important to village residents, especially after the bulldozing loss of the Nye House is much-loved and much-missed landmark. We also feel the proposed plan is crowded and unattractive, and will lead to a lowered real estate value for existing homes. Thank you.
Could you submit that to our planner, so he can put it in?
Yes, I have the copy, too.
You can just give it-- well, okay, if you've got enough, you can distribute that, but you need one for the record.
Do you want to pass it down?
Sure. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Actually, I have a question of the last speaker, please.
Of course.
Should I go back?
Yes, please.
I believe you said you live across the street from this, is that correct?
Yes, we live at 85 Old Main Road, which is directly across.
Okay. And did you say that in the summertime, the road is busier than in the regular time of year?
No, I can't say that, because the traffic, the automobile traffic is probably less, particularly in the morning and the afternoon, but it is a busy road. It's a shortcut to go to Seacrest and Old Silver Beach. And also, very often, there are many bikers that go up that way, because, again, Winslow Road is a direct access to the bike path.
And then, do you know how the school is used in the summer?
I think, I believe there is some sort of a daycare there. Actually, I'm pretty positive about that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has questions of her? Thanks. Is there someone else? Yes, Laura, did you want to respond?
Yeah, just very quickly, thank you. The engineering department recommended a sidewalk tie-in with the school, so that's something that Mr. Borselli will be looking at. And that was, I think, to address the lady's concern who just spoke. The statement that it's a blind entry really is not true. We've given you the site distances. They do exceed the safe site distance recommended distances. The school zone warning light, certainly, as you have done in the past, the board could condition any permit to request that the applicant work with the town to have that And as far as the bonus lot goes, it does meet the zoning bylaw requirement for this type of subdivision. The denial that's suggested for lots 1, 2, and 4, there really is not any authority under the zoning bylaw for historic district reasons to deny those lots. But I can assure you, given this developer and his reputation, that the entrance will be tasteful and well-done. The district will be respected in that regard. And also, in that historic district, that will be regulated by the historic district committee and the historical commission boards for landscape, any walls, any signs, any structure of any type, meaning a house or anything else, fences, to ensure that the character of the historic district is maintained and is in keeping with the neighborhood. So I think that's the general protection for the neighbors and the neighborhood, knowing that that historic district is there, and that anything that's visible from Old Main Road, which is how those districts are set up, practically speaking, the depth of the district is looking at what's practically visible from Old Main Road, is regulated. So that means whatever any developer is doing at the entrance to a subdivision in terms of landscaping or signage, et cetera, is regulated by that district, which does have very tight standards at control. So I think the board and the public can be assured that those concerns will be followed and addressed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who has-- yes, ma'am.
My name is Pauline Coffin. I live at 118 Old Main Road, about four houses down from the property. And again, I want to reiterate, the traffic coming up over the crest of the hill there on Old Main Road in front of the property blocks out any site. You cannot see cars coming up from either way. And coming, again, from Winslow Road, that is, there are so many accidents there. I've lived there over 50 years, and, believe me, the traffic has certainly increased a great deal, not just for the school in the morning and the afternoon, but at all times during the day, and they just fly right by. And so I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Barbara Wand, I'm here on behalf of the Falmouth Preservation Alliance, and I hope this might be helpful. I wanted to try and give you a visual to reinforce what several residents are contending, which is that there's a public safety issue involved in what gets permitted. So what I did, and forgive the lack of ink, I didn't realize my printer wasn't cooperating until I printed this. All of the properties that I've circled are ones that I drove to historic district and stopped-- this doesn't want to separate? All of the circled-- all of the circled properties are ones which are more than 10 feet away from the street. Forgive me, because I can't do accurate measurement with all the snowbanks we've got. But this is based on my own driving of the historic district, and I tried to indicate a couple of things on here. It gets a little complicated on the historic district map, but the street that residents have been complaining about, Winslow, I've indicated here, is that narrow road which drops onto Old Main. And what I couldn't depict here is also that element of the hill that is on Old Main, such that you kind of come over it and you're suddenly into the school zone area. So I wanted to request of the planning board, that is part of your recommendations, that you recommend a safety study, because we have some immovable objects, like a narrow road and a hill, but what we can do is set the buildings on this proposed development further back to accommodate a public safety, greater visibility towards the school and the children and the traffic there. Last week, Attorney Moynihan said that the historic district commission and historical commission want houses nearer the street, but I have not been able, in my contact with them nor with reading regulations, to understand where that factors in here. I think that's a question of the minimums that are tolerated, and I would just ask you to consider that in keeping with what the residents have said about the character of their historic district, or let's take that out of the equation, of their community, that houses set further back are commonplace.
This is not what we can look at under the subdivision, but the developers here listening to your comments, I suspect--
Well, public safety is part of your purview.
Public safety is, but we can't cite the houses.
Right, I understand, but I'm putting this in the context of public safety. So all I'm asking you to consider is the residents' objections, and that the public safety should be looked at seriously. Thank you.
Mike?
I'd like to just comment on the setbacks to elude people's fears of potential public safety with regard to where the houses on lots 1 and 10 would be. The town of Falmouth has zoning bylaws with minimum setback requirements to structures. It's 25 feet to a road. The actual road property line, not the pavement edge. The pavement edge on Old Main Road is at least 10 feet further away from the road property line. So if the houses were set at the minimum setback of 25, on average, the houses would be set back a minimum 35 feet from the actual paved surface. There are many, many houses on that road that are less than that, as I think that exhibit points out. So there would be at least two vehicles stacked on Cobblestone that would be able to look north and south onto Old Main at the site distances that I specified in my letter.
Thank you, Mike. I think many people don't realize the setbacks, and that's a very helpful clarification. Is there anyone else who wishes to say anything? I'm only going to say, if you already stated it, no, I don't want-- but, Sarah, do you have something new?
Yeah. I don't really have anything new. My name's Ed Kalaskas, 85 Old Main Road. I didn't read the letter here, because that isn't my letter, but I had spoken before about the density and so forth. We're across the street from this. There are more houses on this proposed property than there are on Winslow Road, which is, you know, one of the streets that are there. One of the concerns I have is that the state or whoever, through sort of these uncompensated takings for wetlands, environmental concerns, whatever, have created this cluster zoning concept in order to give, you know, people sort of like, well, we're taking your land, you can't use it, so we're going to give you some other kind of benefit that other people couldn't have if this were just regular land. So I'm kind of concerned about that, because we really bought our house in the historic district because we kind of wanted it that way. And we went through whatever kind of requirements there were to add on to it and all that stuff. So what I'm concerned about is because of environmental concerns, whatever, they've created this kind of like, we can really cram a bunch of stuff in here in order to compensate you for the fact the state is saying you can't use this property. And the people that pay the price aren't really the homeowners or the developers or whatever. It's the people that live in the neighborhood and the people that are going to buy these houses. So I'm very concerned about the density, the traffic. There's going to be at least two cars per house. They're going to come and go. They're right across the street from my house. It's kind of over the top of a crest of a hill. The people exceed the speed limit there, which is 30. You know, there's all kinds of things the attorneys can talk about, like, you know, the engineers say, you only need so many feet and this and that, but does that concern going up and over a hill? Is it straight? Is it in Texas? I mean, I doubt that it's site-specific. So I'm just saying that I don't really want people to-- well, I guess what I'm saying is, anybody that buys a piece of property ought to be able to build within the legal limits of what they have. So I'm not saying I don't like this. I guess I am. But I don't think-- what you really ought to look at, what you're doing to the neighborhood, what you're doing to the safety of the-- you know, that road is not a simple road. And I really think that you ought to look at the density and the public safety of this road, and how many cars go on that. And that's all I have to say, which is basically what I said before.
I think I need to clarify something for you, actually. A planned residential development has to first put together a standard grid development so that they can prove that they can get this number of lots, if they developed it standardly.
Yep.
And so they're not getting anything more, except the claim for a bonus lot, should the planning board decide to allow that. They're not getting anything more than they could get by a standard subdivision. There is sufficient upland that they could get that.
Okay.
I think, again, this needed to be clarified, because that may not be understood.
No, I'm fine with that. What I'm saying is, like, you know, people make decisions based on what they perceive the law to be, but I don't think bonuses are in the plan, particularly in this case.
So you're objecting to the bonus lot that you requested?
Sure. I mean, I'm saying you can stay within the law, and I'm sure you can give them a bonus within the law, but I think in this particular case, it would be for planning.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? George?
Take your time. It's not a race.
Okay. My name is George Hampson. I'm from North Falmouth and a town meeting member. A lot of references have been made to speeding and going fast down Old Main Road. The thing that I'd like to point out to is that when these houses are built, they're going to have a surprise, because what we've had for the last two years is speeding at Old Main Road at speeds that you wouldn't believe. And I'm not talking about 35, 40 miles an hour. I'm talking about 50 and 60 miles an hour. Kids doing that over and over, and the people here understand that. That is exceeding the speed of which, if anybody came out, a child or anything like that, there's no way that they could stop. So we've called in the police over and over again to restrict that and to no avail. So if you do come up with a plan to reduce the speed in this area, let's not talk about the existing people, let's talk about the new people that are moving in, and they're going to be strucken with what they see. And I hope you understand, all of you that live here, about the speed levels. It's just unbelievable, and there's no control. Mr. Dalton does a good job. I cannot, any and any way, say anything bad about what he's done for us, and I applaud that. As far as density is concerned, you can work that out. It's up to you. We'd like to see somewhat of a reduction, and I'm not going to push for that, but when you go through here, the plan, wherever it is--
It sounded--
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. It could be very, very nicely done, but Mr. Dalton should work with some kind of a speeding situation so they can reduce the speed that already exists. It's absolutely insane. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Amy?
Amy Lowell, we are butters to the-- my husband and I are-- Amy Lowell, we are butters to the, my husband and I are butters to the north on Cameron Road. I have two procedural questions. One was, there have been a couple of questions asked about the grid plan and when that gets reviewed and determined to be accurate, and then based on that, when the decision is made about the applicability of a bonus lot. So that was my first procedural question. Is that something, there were questions about it last time. Is there more information now or is that something that's evaluated during your review process?
Both. The planning staff looks at the grid plan. If they see that there are problems with it, it really doesn't get any further. But we also look at it when we start our discussion and the applicability. And the bonus lot is at the discretion of the planning board, but to get a bonus lot, you have to meet certain conditions.
Like, and those are in the planning regulations?
Yes, they are. Great.
Okay. The second question was, Virginia Valiela wasn't able to be here tonight, and she had emailed me a couple of questions. I don't have a printout of that. Is it appropriate to read those questions or read a brief email from Virginia?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I didn't know if I needed to have a printout in order to do that.
No.
The, she asked, the two questions be asked of the developer. One was how deep the test borings were below the ground surface, and the other was exactly where they were located on the parcel. And then she had a couple of follow-up points. If I could just read those now?
That, that information, the depth and where they're located is actually on the plan, so...
So you have that information?
Absolutely, we do.
Okay. And her point was, she thinks that, or the back 50% of the lot is quite damp and wet. My hunch is that there is a confining layer of peat or clay under this parcel, which tends to hold water. The overburden on which the houses will be built is sandy soil that drains easily, but if there's a confining layer underneath, the septic flow would go down to it and then move laterally toward the wetlands. Her request was that the developer be requested to do two more soil borings deeper, say 30 feet, at the same locations in order to truly understand the nature of the soils in that area. The final point was if there is a confining layer, all the stormwater is also going to pose a problem. The net result is that the wetlands may expand because of the input of the extra water and the loss of the vegetation to absorb it. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for passing those on from Virginia. And Mike, I know you want to speak to that.
Well, I'm just going to reiterate, reiterate that on the plan, there are several test holes. They were done in accordance with Title V. There is no confining layer. I think I said at the last meeting, once you break through the topsoil and subsoil, you break into what engineers find to be the best soil for engineering purposes, very well-drained coarse material. Groundwater there, but it's in that coarse material. It's the groundwater table, but it is down, it's not confined. It's not perched.
25 inches.
She was concerned, my understanding is, the wetlands, as to whether there is something confining there.
Right. And our, we did the test holes. In this location and in this location, there's monitoring wells there. The wetlands themselves are another 100 feet back, and they're slight depressions. They're isolated wetlands because they're groundwater, they're groundwater-fed. The groundwater, the parent groundwater table is close to the, in that area, 100 feet away, which is lower than where the houses would be. So we did, we did find it, but we had to dig down.
Okay, so the boggy area is indicative of the groundwater level?
Yeah, and it wasn't really even boggy. It just happened to have sufficient plant community, certain plant, identifying plants that are wetland indicators. There was enough of those, barely enough, to qualify it as an isolated wetland.
Thank you, Mike.
Just like to clarify on the density and the bonus lot that's being requested. It is correct, yeah, it is correct that the density or the bonus lot is at the discretion of the planning board. The purpose and intent, I believe, of the planned residential development bylaw and the bonus lot provision is to persuade and encourage this type of development by a developer and going through this special permit process and being subject to certain conditions that a developer might not otherwise be subject to under a standard subdivision. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that it is a bonus lot, but it's there for a reason. The bylaw is prepared that way to encourage this type of development for the obvious reason that neither the state nor really the town want to encourage grid subdivision development within a sensitive environmental area, which we have here. You have a rare species habitat for the eastern box turtle, and you have wetland resource areas. So as a community, the bylaw has been adopted to encourage a developer to bring you this type of plan. And that's why the bonus lot provisions really are there, is to, is to foster this type of development. And yes, it is a bonus, but at the same time, a developer can bring in a standard subdivision plan and develop environmentally sensitive areas that nobody wants developed. So I encourage you to look at those provisions of the bylaw, and I just would like to make that clear that it's not, it's not a given. There's benefits on both sides. There's benefits to the town, there's benefits to the environment, there's benefits to the community, and yes, there's a benefit to the developer. But that's really the purpose and intent of our zoning bylaw, is you as a planning board to encourage this type of development if certain conditions are met as far as the bonus lot goes, such as the adjacent open space. By doing, by approving this type of cluster, you are actually permanently protecting a much larger tract of open space because it abuts public open space, which is thought to be a significant benefit to the environment. The larger the tract of the open space, the better off the environmental issues are. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public? Yes, sir. Do you have something new?
I just have a question.
Okay.
Hi, Ed Jurdano. I just, my question concerns 600 feet of visibility looking north. That would, yeah, I just got to know where that is from, relation to the crest of the hill and the road. I don't know where the crest of the hill is in relation to the road.
I can explain that to you.
So the centerline of the new road is actually designed to be at the crest. So as you, if you were in a vehicle leaving on cobblestone and you looked north or left or south or right, you would be seeing the road from the highest point. So it's like maximize the visibility. And you would be looking in a distance of 600 feet to the south, you can see the entire sidewalk that fronts on North Falmouth Elementary. You can see, there's a, once you get just south of North Falmouth Elementary, the road curves slightly, that's where you lose distance. It's in excess of 600. To the north, again, you're at the crest. You can see to the north, you can see where Winslow comes out, and the road is dipping down again, and then you see it rise back up and can almost see to Benjamin Nine, I think it's Benjamin Nine, the left that leads back out to Wild Harbor. Almost, not quite. So you're at the very crest of Old Main, and Old Main pitches down from the new road.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Do you have something new?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on Attorney Moynihan's presentation that the zoning bylaw really helps, you know, the community and all that kind of thing. And, you know, yeah, it has a minor effect on the builder and so forth. Fundamentally, if I remember correctly, this wetland is not going to be for public use. You're not going to be able to walk in here. This is going to belong to a, an association or something. It's not going to be public land. It's not going to be accessible. The fact that it's, you know, like next door to the school doesn't really help anybody. So I really don't see how, you know, this is such a great benefit to the community. The law says you can't build on this stuff. And so we're really trying to encourage people to not build on stuff that the law says you can't. So I just kind of wonder how that's a benefit to me or a benefit to anybody if you can't use it, other than the state says you can't use it anyway. So I'm just saying, I wonder how that justifies this bonus.
Maybe I can answer that very quickly. It's not correct that the state says you can't build on it. All right? There are restrictions on building on it, but you can build on it. That's, that's a fact. So that's why this type of plan is encouraged and is within our bylaw, because you can build on it.
I'd add to that. It's a common, understood principle of planning and development, both mainly from an environmental point of view, that massing of larger pieces of open space is a preferred way to protect the environment. In fact, that's why it's recognized in your bylaw. That's one of the benefits of an open space planned residential development.
I just realized I hadn't gotten the answer to the question about the depth of the borings. You said you have it, but do, if you wouldn't mind answering, I would like to know...
Of course, the public can hear too. Sure, I'm sorry.
There's a series of soil logs on the road plan and profile in sheet one of two, the upper right corner. The six, and the average depth is 10 feet. We would dwell into the parent material, dwell into the water table, dwell below any potential perched layer or confining layer.
Mr. Borselli, can you indicate where those borings are in that drawing you just flipped over? I can see four of them on the sheet I have.
Test hole one, test hole two, which are these two. Test hole 1A and 2A, which are these two. And then two other subsequent test holes that we indicated as A and B, A and B, which is where we installed the monitoring wells as well. So there's a total of six. Thank you.
Is there a time for you to listen?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Borselli, has there ever been an occasion where you would have the need to go deeper than 10 feet? For instance, Mrs. Valiela's requested a board at 30 feet. Has there any, been any reason to do that?
No. From the perspective of what we need for the soil, we need to understand the soil characteristics for two reasons, mainly one reason, for its ability to drain, commonly known as a PERC test. And that needs to be understood for a certain depth. And 10 feet is sufficient because septic systems will never be deeper than 10 feet. And drainage systems, which also, in this case, rely on infiltration, would never be deeper than that. So it's, it's, there's never a need to dig deeper than 10 feet.
And assuming it's virgin soil, there wouldn't be any layers unknown to you beyond that point, correct?
Correct. Certainly, if there were, they would be so deep that they would have no impact whatsoever. But you'd have to dig to bedrock, which is probably at least 50 feet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Brian, you have the engineer's report, which was not here last time. Could you please give us that? Is there anything?
Mr. Borselli indicated that there were some minor changes to the road profile centerline that Scott Schuter requested, and I believe Mike and Marley went over them today. So that was one of the main points, because the requirement of 2% grade for 100 feet, I believe at the entrance, and we're fiddling with 1.5%, 2% to make sure you can stack a few cars, is one of the bigger issues. You did look at the vertical curves, people have been concerned about. Subdivision regulations regarding sidewalks and grass plots. And, let's see, groundwater logs. The submitted drainage calculations meet the requirements, and they talked about some of the indications of groundwater encountered or not. Otherwise, the engineer's report, the satisfactory one, with some minor changes that you'll see in form of revised plans.
When you were reading that, did I understand that there are still questions on groundwater logs or not? Oh, okay.
It meets all, meets all the requests.
I didn't tell the way you read it, whether...
The submitted drainage calculations meet our requirements.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions that might want to direct towards Brian with the engineer's report or whatever? Ralph?
Not, not for Brian's comments.
Okay.
I was just wondering if Mr. Borselli could clarify something that I haven't resolved yet. In the last, in the last hearing that we had, the beginning of this hearing, I guess, the, the structures on lot two and nine will be set back beyond the historic district line so that they will not be affected. Is that correct?
Yes. If you look closely at the plan, there's a bold dashed line that represents the boundary of the historic district.
Right.
There is sufficient drawn on lot two and lot nine such that the homes would not be within the district.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone...
I want to clarify that though. I mean, part of the lot is in the historic district. I suppose theoretically, if someone wanted to notice a house just inside, they know historic district, they could, but they'd have to go in the historic district and meet all of their standards.
Anyone else have any questions here? Okay, do you all feel satisfied so that we can close the hearing at this point?
Do I have one question?
Sure.
On the, the septic systems in town, what, what's the average depth of the septic system? It's, we're trying to figure out if that, these are going to be impacted by the soil. How deep do they go on average in the whole town? What are you, how deep do you put them?
The top of, the top of the septic system on average is about two or three feet below the ground surface. The septic system leaching component itself is about two to three feet at most thick. So that would translate into the bottom being, I'm going to say on average, five feet below the ground surface.
And the, these will all be standard, that, all that same depth as they are everywhere else in town? In general?
Yes. They're pretty straightforward.
No mounding or anything? It's just standard? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Laura?
Yes, just if you're inclined to close the hearing, could you do so but leave it open for submission of the minor adjustments to the road profile and as suggested by the engineering department, the changes that they're asking for on those plans? Leave the hearing open for submission of those.
Of course, we can do that. Because that's, that's not a problem. These are technical changes, correct, Brian?
You can close it, but to leave it open for the technical changes.
Okay. So could I have a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to close the hearing, but leave it open for comments.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is to leave it open for comments.
That is technical.
Technical comments.
I'm sorry. It's technical comments.
Technical corrections.
Technical corrections.
Good.
Close the hearing, but leave it open for technical corrections to the plan. That's what the motion is, and it's been seconded. Okay. Any further comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. And Brian, we'll be looking at this again for the session. Do you have any?
We'll probably be looking at this sometime in March.
In March, okay.
Probably after your joint meeting.
Now, the other thing is too, according to the policy that we put...
Keep it down, please, folks. We're having a meeting, excuse us.
Could you please move way out, voices down?
I'll bring your mic up quickly.
If you wish to keep talking, please move down the hall and around the corner. According to the policy that we have now, when we are discussing the plan, if we wish to have a site visit, we would need to bring it up at this point in time and have a motion to do so, at which point Brian would follow up with the owner of the property to schedule that. And considering we've got a lot of snow on the ground, another maybe three to five tonight, and God knows what's coming, we're just going to have to have a motion for that, and then based upon the clearing of the property of the snow, I think. So would somebody like to...
I can't hear you.
Can you bang the hammer?
I could, but they wouldn't hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So could I have a motion to the effect of we would like to do a site visit on this property? And is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. So this will be scheduled sometime in the future, when, if we vote it, when the property is clear of, whether there's impediments at this point. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Okay, so at some point, Brian?
Soon, probably, you know.
When we can actually walk?
May.
May. My neighbor says first way to grasp greening up is going to be May 1st.
Get you out as soon as we can.
We're going.
Get you out as soon as we can.
Thank you.
I'm sure.
Okay. Now we move on to decisions. The applicant is Louis Lowery. A preliminary plan reviewed to subdivide 10,92 acres into seven lots located at West Falmouth Highway across from Chase Road, Warwick and Associates. And we have the preliminary plan draft decision here, and I and Paul, we're not here, but I think we could vote on this, because it's not anything that needs a super majority or anything. So would somebody please read and make the motion?
I'll read.
Okay, Paul.
Motion, the planning board vote following recommendations to address the issues raised under the subdivision regulations of the town of Falmouth, Article III, preliminary plans. For plan entitled preliminary subdivision plan prepared for Louis Lowery, Apostles III and 23 West Falmouth Highway, Route 28A, prepared by Warwick and Associates, dated December 5th, 2014, scale one inch equals 40 feet. Number one, listed waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land must be included as part of the definitive plan application. Two, the applicant shall limit the disturbance to the existing stone walls to accommodate driveways. The applicant shall be required to obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the historic district commission prior to opening any stone walls. Three, at the time of the definitive plan submission, the applicant shall also apply to the planning board for special permit for the anticipated common driveways. Four, the property is in the West Falmouth Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District, and applicant is encouraged to consider the installation of septic systems with enhanced nitrogen removal. Five, the planning board is not the competent jurisdiction to determine any private deed to restrictions encumbering the property. However, the applicant should be aware of any private restrictions and develop the definitive plan accordingly. Six, the applicant shall proceed with the no road clustered definitive plan special permit option. The planning board does not encourage the applicant to further develop traditional grid plan weighing out King Pine Way.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on this, Doug?
Yeah, with regard to number four, properties in the West Falmouth Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District, and the applicant is encouraged to consider installation of septic systems with enhanced nitrogen removal, I would think it would be possibly stronger language than encouraged.
I agree. What would you suggest?
I think the applicant should expect that we will require to use denitrating septic...
How would you put that into this, Brian? How would you change the language?
Just, you know, you would put a period, the property is in the West Falmouth Harbor, or West Falmouth Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District period, the applicant should expect the board to require the installation of septic systems with enhanced nitrogen removal.
Okay.
Motion?
Yeah. I'd make a motion that we change the language as described by Mr. Curry, to advise the applicant that we may require. And I think I will definitely vote to require it. I don't know what you all will do.
Well, he said to expect the board, so...
Correct. So that's the wording that I'll put in the motion. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, isn't it, Brian? I thought it was greater than five lots. It had to be. Don't, what is that? What is that? I've forgotten.
I believe if it's greater than a certain acreage or a number of lots, it falls within your purview, and you, you may require.
Yeah, right. I thought, isn't it five lots? I thought it was five acres.
Five acres or five lots. But if it's over five acres, then you may require enhanced nitrogen removal.
Yeah, and so it's more than five acres, okay. That's, that's, you beat me to it, Doug.
Any further comments?
I was just wondering how many waivers we'd be looking at when we go from a grid to a cluster.
In this instance, they'll be, they'll ask you for waiver of everything for road construction. The road's not getting built.
I was going through this today, and I'm looking at it. It's like, wow.
But the board may still require certain things like, you may want a street light, you may want a street treat. So the list of waivers will be pretty encyclopedic, except for a few things.
Okay.
And do you see any problems with that at this point in time, that we should warn them of as being a preliminary decision?
I think, I think not.
Okay. Further comments or questions on this decision on the preliminary plan? Okay, we have the amendment that we have to vote on, so all in favor of Doug's amendment, which is that the applicant should expect. Yes, we can. Yes, we can vote. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Okay. Now, we also have the motion and a second on it. Is there further discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Thank you. The mix on the agenda is discussion, largest wave release, and Brian, do you have a letter in regard to that?
Right, we have a letter from the council for the applicant. They request the board allow them to withdraw their request at this time. I would simply recommend to the board that you do so in the form of a motion.
And a motion, that we accept council's request to withdraw the motion.
I make a motion as, as moot. As moot.
That we accept council's request.
Accept through council's request, yes. I'm choking on a loss inter.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any, any questions, Brian, or further on that?
Would you say, again, the...
Okay, council has requested that the largest wave release be withdrawn. So we have a motion on the floor to accept council's request to withdraw the motion, to withdraw the release. And we have to accept that request.
You have to take some form of action. You just can't do nothing. So you are accepting their request to withdraw their application for the release, so we can record that with the town.
So it's the applicant's request to withdraw?
Through their, through their attorney.
No, not town council?
No.
No, no, also for the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained. Now we move on to committee reports. Shall we start down at that end with Ralph? Are you...
Let's see, the Community Preservation Committee. This Thursday, we're having our annual needs assessment at 6:30 at the Herman Room in the library. So everyone's invited to give us your input, the public. On March 21st, the Saturday, we're going to have our first workshop, which this board has never had since I've been here for 12 years. Some boards have them frequently. We might want to consider that. But anyway, the Community Preservation Committee is going to have a workshop, and also, we're going to be celebrating our 10th year in business. So you're all invited to come to that also, if you'd like. That would be at 2 o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday, March 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm an liaison to the West Ward Advisory Committee, and I have not attended the last couple of meetings, since a lot of the issues have been addressed. But there was a very interesting presentation about two weeks ago by, on the opening of the pond, the bridge at the pond, and it was technically a lot of information, a lot of discussion on it. I think it was very helpful to show how the, how the widening of the bridge from 50 to 90 feet is going to improve the flow in, in the pond. So I think that was a very, very interesting and very worthwhile presentation.
Okay. Would you like to give it for the...
Sure. The Local Comprehensive Plan Committee has been working on the transportation element as of late, and like most of the elements, we hash quite a bit of information around. We're trying to craft our goal statement, which is taking some time. We're still working on policies. We have yet to get to any action items. If you could add to that, that's pretty much where we stand at this moment.
Okay, yeah. We're still very much in flux on transportation at this point. What? EDIC?
EDIC. We have two major things that are going on. Bus station is, we're very, very close. I think it's been put to our chairman to resolve the last few issues of the lease, and he's been authorized to go ahead when he's ready, and they're going, a flurry of activity at the very end is going on there. And that basically is a million and four that the state's giving us to renovate a 2,000 square foot building, which gives us $700 a square foot to renovate the building. I think that we're going to be able to do it pretty well, considering we're going to keep the building back to what it was, so hopefully that, those numbers will work. We're very confident that we have the funds to do it. And the, so we feel that the landfill is moving along very, very quickly as well, as quickly as it can with all the approvals it needs. But we're now, we have had to ask for a couple of weeks' extension from the state, because we're already getting into the deadlines and, you know, quickly running out of time. When you get an approval, they give you 30 days to move on to the next stage, so it's going to be challenging, but that's, we're, we're full speed ahead on that one.
Doug?
Coastal Pond Management Committee hasn't had a meeting this month because, just a dead time of year, but there's an ongoing plan to present a management plan for West Falmouth Harbor to the selectmen sometime in the near future.
Okay. We're going to tag you soon.
What? We need a transportation committee.
Tried that, did that, not doing that.
Okay. Is there anything that people want to see on future agenda items that aren't being scheduled currently, that we know of by the staff to come up? Ralph?
Right. Paul and I attended a meeting last Wednesday about transportation. And since there is no more Transportation Commission in town, I think the planning board had discussed in the past the possibility of us assuming that, that role. And I think that that might be a good discussion item for us to consider in the future.
And it would be nice, since we're working on the transportation element too, and action items on it.
Pat?
Yes?
Also, as everybody knows, this is my last term as the Community Preservation, the Planning Board Representative Community Preservation Committee. So sometime in the near future, I would like to make a presentation to all of you about what is entailed to be the representative to the Community Preservation Committee. And so someone on this board will have to step up and assume that role July 1st of this year. So I will try and work up a little handout sheet for you to, to look at, and so you can consider whether or not you'd be interested in representing the planning board on the Community Preservation Committee.
I would suggest, Ralph, I've been thinking about this, I would suggest that it's probably going to be better, say, sometime towards April, because we've got the May elections coming up and...
It's fine.
Put it, you know, closer in people's minds.
Fine.
When, or maybe even after the elections.
It's fine.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
There was a very interesting article in the papers quite a few months ago by the vice chair of the Community Preservation, summarized the things they're doing, and that might be a good handout, to copy that and distribute that as part of your, your presentation, where you get more specifics. She was talking about some general issues that the CPC handles.
Was it in the enterprise?
It was in the enterprise. By Virginia...
Carmichael.
Carmichael, yes. I thought it was a very good article.
It was, yeah.
It was rather long, but it was very detailed, had a lot of information. Might be helpful to repeat, distribute it.
Anybody else have anything they want to see on an agenda in the future? Okay. Correspondence, and this is something that I received a good bit ago, but it was in the holiday season, and so I just kind of put it aside. And it was from Jeff Wyman, who is FCTV. It's a questionnaire, and it's very short, but he'd like to have some input from the planning board, and I know the three of us were on a, a talk with him about the Comprehensive Plan Committee and what we do. And so the topics that he would like to see commented on are communication and how well they communicate as a station, public, for town purposes. And he's, you know, just checked, very satisfactory, satisfactory, needs improvement in comments. Another one is reliability and responsiveness, the same thing. And another one is service quality, again, the same thing. And channel 15 content relevancy, same thing again. Then additional comments and feedback, and then he's looking for programming ideas. So I can either forward this to anybody who's interested. Bob, you would like to...
Well, yeah, I think you should forward it.
To everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I don't know who's interested in getting back to him on this, but they've been very good, I think, in doing what they do here, getting our board meetings out, and also, they've been very good, I think, also, my feeling is, in letting people know through this means, I know I was interviewed also at one point, what we do. And people do watch this, and they do learn from it. So particularly if you have some ideas for other programming. So I will be happy to forward this questionnaire to all of you, and then you can get back to him as you see fit. Okay? Yes, Jeff?
I'd just like to make a comment. I don't know if everybody knows it, but I think, you know, with the way they film our meetings all the time, and they index them, and you can actually go to FCTV, call up the meetings on your computer, and slide your mouse up and down to get exactly what you want to hear, listen to what you want to hear at the meeting, and go on to something else. If, that's something, I think it's a great resource, but I don't know many people that have actually drilled down and actually used it, but it's, it's a wonderful thing to have open to everybody. And I just thought, tell, use this tonight, see it's out there.
All right, Paul. Are you suggesting most of our meetings are boring and people should skip them?
Well, the second time around, I'm assuming they've all watched them once and came to them, so it's... them, so it'll be the third time I'm looking at them. In that case, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. So, and they actually are very active, and they could do more if they had more people helping volunteering, because there's always a cast call looking to cover more events that are relevant to town government as well as just local social work. And we can help with even more people down there to help with filming and producing. So I just want to put that out there while we're on TV.
Great. Okay. Okay. We have no other correspondence, it's just I wanted to bring this up. Yes, Paul?
No, you were talking about the next meeting. Are you there?
Yeah. Mark Schump.
The next meeting is a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Has the agenda item been finalized?
Right now, you're looking at the report from the corridor study folks for Route 28, together with a discussion with the Board of Selectmen, for town meeting on the goals and policies of the Local Comprehensive Plan. And we're trying to put together a little bit of a resiliency discussion with the Concom and DEW. For sure, the first two items, we're working on them.
Will we have the scope of work from the County Commission to review prior to that meeting?
You have the Commission's scope of work back in January. So you have, that's already gone out.
Okay. No change to that, then. Thank you.
The Commission is going to also request a separate meeting to sit down with both the planning board and the selectmen at the same time. Agenda on the 10th may be a little bit too crowded to do a good job. So we might put that off till April.
So we don't exactly have the agenda solidified at this point?
For sure, McMahon Associates will discuss the Route 28 Main Street corridor study, their findings so far, get feedback from both boards. For sure, discussion about the Local Comprehensive Plan. I'll work on the resiliency, because I talked to Doug about it today. I'm not sure I can get all the cast characters together by the 10th.
Okay. Are we likely to meet a little earlier, like 6 o'clock?
It's a home game.
Tuesday night?
It's a Tuesday night.
Right.
So it's a discussion of the two fortune.
Well, then, my thought is, with this particular amount of things on the agenda, would it be better to meet at 6? I'm looking for your input on that.
If we have the three items, probably. If not, then probably your 6:30 start.
Okay. So that will be determined when you know whether we have the three items.
Correct.
Okay. And it'll come out, then, be notified as to whether we are meeting at 6:30 or 6.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Moved and seconded, and we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye. Wait.